Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the October 27th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. It's almost Halloween. A thought for the day...
I thought you were going to talk about the scratch on his forehead, maybe Frankenstein next to me.
I'll recognize, I'll recognize the Vice Chairman, Vice President of the Board of Commissioners, if you want to say something.
About what?
About the scratch on his forehead.
No, that's okay.
I didn't do that.
I know, sure you didn't. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to give my thought for the day, which I think is really great. I'm not going to tell you whose it is, because it'll... Knowledge speaks, but wisdom listens. We're going to repeat that once a day, okay?
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Our first, we have two proclamations today. I will deliver the first on behalf of the Board, and then Commissioner Kalo will deliver the second. The first one is for Bill Glawacki, who's retiring. Lucky Bill. It says in the matter of expressing our best wishes to William Glawacki on his retirement from Lorraine County Golden Acres Nursing Home. Whereas Bill Glawacki announced retirement as Administrator effective October 31st, and whereas Bill began his employment in Lorraine County in 1979 as Administrative Services Manager for the SEDA and JTPA programs, and whereas in November 1983, he took the position as Golden Acres Home Accountant, and in December 1985, he was appointed Superintendent to Golden Acres County Home. In November 1986, he completed his nursing home administrators training and became a licensed nursing home administrator. And whereas Bill was instrumental with many aspects of improving Golden Acres, when he took over the facility, it was funded by a tax levy. In May 1988, after a long process, Golden Acres received Medicaid certification for 62 intermediate beds, which enabled the facility to increase its revenue. In 1992, an additional 20 beds were Medicaid certified specifically as an Alzheimer's unit, enabling the facility to become self-supporting by 1997. In September 2005, Golden Acres received its Medicare certification for all 82 beds and is a skilled nursing facility. And, whereas we are recognizing Bill for more than 26 years of service with the county, and whereas his good fellowship and congenial sense of humor with working associates has been most enjoyable, now therefore be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that we express appreciation to Bill Glawacki for services rendered to the county and its citizens. Further be it resolved that the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and staff wish for Bill and his wife Judy a very healthy, peaceful retirement as he pursues his interests and hobbies for many years to come. We're very happy to present this to you today, Bill. And if you'd like to make some comments, you could just step right up to the microphone. No, you've got to say something.
I'm not very good at public speeches, so I'll make this short, but I want to thank the Commissioners, the current Commissioners, all the Commissioners I've worked with over the years. I've had a great 26 years with the county. I've got tremendous support from everybody, and thank you for this proclamation, and I am looking forward to retirement, so, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Bill. I understand Mr. Cordez says that there's going to be a little cake after the meeting. Cake and coffee, so you're not allowed to leave, and anybody who wants to stay is invited. Thank you, Bill.
Finish your turn. Proclamation for retiring Lorraine Municipal Clerk of Court Steve Bancek. In the matter of honoring and expressing our best wishes to Stephen W. Bancek for his outstanding and dedicated services as Lorraine Municipal Clerk of Court. Whereas Stephen W. Bancek was appointed as Lorraine Municipal Clerk of Court January 8th, 1981, then ran four consecutive successful campaigns retiring October 31st, 2005. And whereas Stephen is a trustee for the Ohio Association of Municipal Clerks and a member of the National Association of Court Management, and whereas Stephen W. Bancek married Laurel Young on February 27th, 1960, and together they have six children, 14 grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. And whereas Stephen W. Bancek proudly served in the Air Force from 1956 through 1960. Whereas Stephen W. Bancek served as citizens of Lorraine as the 8th Ward Councilman. And whereas among Steve's other accomplishments, he has served as Lorraine International Festival President and Trustee, as well as former Grand Knight for the Knights of Columbus, Council 637, and former District Deputy KFC. Stephen was also the founder and chair for the Flags on Broadway. And whereas Stephen W. Bancek has volunteered his time coaching Lorraine Youth Baseball and CYO Basketball. Stephen has also been the CYO Athletic Director for Nativity of the BVM Roman Catholic Church, where he is a member, a former Lecter, and a current choir member. And whereas Stephen W. Bancek has been involved in many veteran, fraternal, ethnic, and social groups, Stephen is a life member of Lorraine United Polish Club, AMVETS, and PACC, as well as a member of the Alariah United Polish Club, IAV, and the American Legion. Now therefore be it resolved that we, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, hereby consider it an honor to express our appreciation and thanks to Mr. Stephen W. Bancek for his outstanding professionalism and dedication while serving as Lorraine Municipal Clerk of Court. And further be it resolved that we and our staff wish for Stephen, his wife Laurel, and family the very best of luck and health in the years to follow. Witness our signatures this 27th day of October, 2005.
You can say a few things now. You watch us.
Bill, I can talk a lot longer than you do.
We didn't know you were a member of the choir, so maybe you might want to sing us a little song.
No, we don't. I've heard him sing.
Mr. Kalo, my remarks to you will be last. Betty, Laurie, everybody here, thank you very much. It's indeed a pleasure. To receive this award, I must tell you that on Monday I will be leaving with mixed emotions. You forgot a couple items when I wrote this for you too, by the way. We'll talk about that later. Mr. Kalo, of course, you told me I had to be nice, so I will. Teddy is like a second son to me, and that's about all I'll say nice about him, because he will pay later. Seriously, though, to the Commissioners, thank you very much. To everybody here, most of you I know, even from the dog warden on up, if that's a start, I guess, but thanks.
He's Polish, right? That's why you know him.
Pardon?
I said, he's Polish, that's why you know him.
Well, but you noticed I sat in the Polish corner.
Is that what?
Glawacki, Nabokowski, Bancek, I mean, we got, of course, the Bancek doesn't ring, right, so you've got to make it Banaszak. So Betty, let me say this to you. Dzień dobry i zawsze skąd? Czy danas nigdzie nie pude, ale ja tutaj będę. So, waczy się tabusz.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wish I could. And Joyce baked this cake in the back room.
Steve, there's one thing that you didn't mention, that you were the second-best 8th Ward Councilman in the city of Lorraine.
Oh, I wonder who was the best one?
That also was not the way I wrote it. Thank you.
They're having a little retirement party for you. I'm sure I'm not going to miss it. It's going to be lots of fun. Thanks to both of you for coming this morning. I see that Dr. Skeels is in the audience, but he's not scheduled for his award today. Right? Jim Skeels?
Okay.
That's right, right? You just came to visit us? You're on the program?
I was requested, Tom, but I will come to another board every other time.
Well, I think maybe we got our signals mixed up here, Jim.
That's fine.
And for that, I apologize. You don't know anything about it. Well, Joyce knows about it. She'll tell you. I'm sorry, because we have an honor for you too. Oh, now we're doing the dogs. Oh, which one of you wants this dog, by the way?
Okay, today we have a three-month-old German Shepherd. He is in cage 75 and will be available November the 1st. Very cute. I'm guessing maybe he might be a mix, only because he's got a real curly tail. See that? Like a little Chow mix, maybe. But come down to our Lorraine County Dog Kennel if you're considering a pet. We've got a lot of animals to choose from, and they're all very cute, so come down to our dog kennel and pick one out and see if we can find a match for you. Thank you.
It's all nice.
Great-looking dog.
He's pretty. Okay, under resolutions? Number one, job and family services bills?
So moved.
Second? Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
No advances for sure? No advances. Requisitions?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on summary for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Commissioners, we'd like to request a brief executive summary to conclusion of our regular board business today to discuss a potential new hire and update you on a few matters of pending litigation, I believe prosecutor and is also will have the same question, which we brought to litigation.
Thank you.
Authorize the salary of Chris Cook, magistrate for Judge Mihawk Lorraine Municipal Court, at a bi-weekly rate of $961.78, which reflects the county's 2/5 share effect of October 30, 2005, replacing retired magistrate Jazinski.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Just a question, is this a salary increase, or is it the same?
New hire.
It's a new hire.
I, to be quite honest with you...
I thought somebody retired.
You did. Al Jazinski retired as magistrate in Lorraine Municipal Court, and Chris got hired.
It's, we have an arrangement with them on the magistrates. We don't have the ability to decide what the salary is, so I didn't really particularly see whether it was the same or not. We're required to pay 2/5 share on the salary that's established in Lorraine. It's been an ongoing, complex issue and a matter of frustration for us here at the county with some of the cities off and on, but I think we've reached a point where we're just satisfied, we're letting it go. So I, you know, I don't know if it's an increase or not, Commissioner, but we have to pay it.
Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Approve an enter into lease agreement between Sarret Enterprises, Leland, and Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for a portion of strip shopping center known as Mills Creek Plaza at 33109 Center Ridge Road, North Ridgeville. This will be used for Lorraine County Clerk of Courts as a satellite office for automobile titles and passports. Agreement is effective November 1st, 2005 through January 31st, 2009. The county will pay $20,400 annually payable in monthly installments of $1,700 per month, not to exceed $61,200.
Mr. Cordez?
Commissioners, this is the, this is the lease agreement for the new office that Clerk of Courts Nabokowski is going to be opening over in North Ridgeville closer to the border with Cuyahoga County. Now, I wish I could tell you that he wasn't up to something, but what he's up to is trying to draw business out of Cuyahoga County on our eastern border, and also to serve better the residents that are living on the eastern side of the county rather than having to come all the way down to Alariah. There's a lot of activity going on with passports, and he thinks that it'll be advantageous for the county, and we have been working with him for several months at the request of the Board to make this happen, and it's been a slow process. I believe I saw him here earlier.
Yes, he's here.
So maybe, maybe he just wanted to talk open on it also.
Good morning, Ron.
Mr. Cordez, members of the Commission, it's a joy to be here. Can I just straighten out something? People moving into Lorraine County from Cuyahoga County in droves, and they've been doing that for 10 years or so. They have this nasty habit of going back to Great Northern Shopping Center to get, buy things, and everything, every merchant in North Ridgeville has the same problem, trying to get people to stay here. One of the ways is to make it a little more convenient for them, so we're hoping that this office will keep some of the business that really is Lorraine County business, title business. And also, the passport business has given us the opportunity to subsidize what's called 217 Fund. Titles have a separate special revenue fund. Unfortunately, for the last three years, it's been running into the red. It used to be pretty, it used to be pretty healthy fund, but we've been spending more money than, than we've been taking in. The last time they had a title increase, title fee increase was 1973, 1993, and we're doing just slightly more titles than we were in 1993. Obviously, we're spending a lot more money on healthcare and on salaries and everything else. So one of the ways we paid for that, the difference and avoid having to come to the general fund for money is by getting involved in passports. Now, most of the people, most of the business people in this community, most of the people I know who travel around the world, don't know that we do passports, so anybody you can tell Clerk of Courts does passports. And we think that the office near Mills Creek will be an office that is near a lot of people who do a lot of traveling, and will allow us to subsidize the title fund by selling a lot of passports. Hopefully, it's also a very, I think it's a good way to take, take the government to people, because coming into Alariah, this will make it much easier for folks to get title work done and to get the passport work done, so appreciate your help in this matter.
This $1,700 a month comes out of the general fund?
Well, we have reached an arrangement with Mr. Nabokowski that he will reimburse us for the cost of running the office from the title fund. Under, under the particular nuances of the Higher Advice Code, you have to lease and contract for the space for the various departments of government, and so we've entered a reimbursement-type relationship, and I think we all kind of understand that.
Will it be a wash, then? I mean, is it going to generate enough money to be able to...
Hopefully, it'll generate a lot more money than the cost of the office.
You know, we, we went over the numbers several times over the months, and I think at the end of the day, they were best-guest estimates. It's, it's, it's an undertaking that'll have to prove itself over the three years, and if it doesn't prove a worthwhile venture at the end of the three years, it can be revisited for, you know, moving back into one, one area. I think it's a worthwhile venture. I think that we need to get on the eastern end. I know Mr. Nabokowski was, was saying we didn't want to get people coming over from Cuyahoga, but I don't think we'll send them home if they come over to the office. There's long lines over there at Cuyahoga, and we're going to be, we're much friendlier over here.
The way you explained it, I sounded a bit predatory. We're really trying to take care of our own people first, but it'd be, the whole neighborhood obviously can take advantage of the service, and that includes a lot of people from Cuyahoga County, too.
So I, you know, I guess to completely answer your question, there's some unknowns, but it's a worthy venture.
And are you going to pull people from the Alariah office, or are you going to add additional staff to cover this?
Ultimately, ultimately, we have two downtown offices which never made much business sense. It was caused because of the state's desire for a one-stop shop. Our goal is to have one downtown Alariah office, part of the one-stop shop, and use people in, from there, from the other office to help with the North Ridgeville office.
So you won't be adding additional staff?
No, no additional staff at this, at this time.
Okay.
Never say no additional staff.
Other questions?
It's a good idea.
Also move for approval?
Second?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Thank you, Ron, and Mr. Cordez. I know this was a long time working this agreement out, and the original paperwork that I got, the rent was a little higher, so...
Yeah, $1,900, wasn't it?
Yes, so thank you for your efforts in reducing expenses. I'm sorry, Teresa.
Approved change order number one to Schreimer Construction Company, North Olmsted, the amount of $54,560.10 for Lorraine County Justice Center, Phase 4, a Commerce Court parking lot. Additional change orders for asphalt removal, replacement, unforeseen foundation removal, light pole base, pier locations, and to be completed within 11 additional days. Authorized county administrator to execute on behalf of the Board.
Mr. Cordez?
Commissioners, the only thing we haven't found digging up that parking lot is Blackbeard's treasure, okay?
That's probably, that's on the other side of the street.
It probably is. The, I'm assuming that we'll find Jimmy Hoffa's body any day now.
Well, you know, Alariah found a horse on the other side of the street, so...
That they did. The only thing we found under the justice center was a big boulder that we had to pay to move. We were pretty lucky there. Luck ran out on this parking lot. The original proposal to shore up this area was in excess of $115,000 to $125,000. We went back to the table four or five times and made the intelligent people act more intelligently, and we were able to wrestle out a solution of $54,000. In a nutshell, I was watching too much TV one night. I watched the Discovery Channel and things like that, and I was watching how they put parking lots in in California in quake zones. And what they do with unstable terrain is that they'll use a lot of rock, and then they'll use, almost like a flexible meshing that goes across that before they lay out the substrate on top of it. It's a little bit more complicated than I know, but, but what it does is it allows the weight to shift around and gives flexibility to the, so that when the terrain shifts, you have more, greater strength. And I went to them and I said, hey, I watched this thing on TV, and it was an emerald, can we use this in the parking lot? They went back, came back and said, yeah, we can do that. And, and so they, they designed around that, and we were able to bring the cost down to about $54,000, and plus remove all those foundations. We ran into four different foundation walls down there at four different locations, not the four around one, one, one structure. So I think that we have engineered a cost-effective solution that's going to guarantee us with as much reasonableness as possible. Success at the parking lot is not going to develop a sinkhole or, or get wavy on us in the very near future, and I'm comfortable that we need to spend this money. There was just no way around some of these things. Even doing more bore samplings, unless you hit right on that foundation wall, you're just not, you're just not going to know it's there. Lot of bad fill every time we dig around in, in some of the areas of Alariah, because it's a very old, old area, you know, there's housing there first, and then, then business and so forth. And in the old days, when they knocked the house down, they just dropped it into the foundation and put some dirt over it and went on their way. So that's it in a nutshell. It has to be spent. We, I just want you to know that we did a lot of due diligence to hold the cost down on this, and we just didn't simply call, launch a change order.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? I'll move for approval.
Second?
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Our sanitary engineer declared it necessary to construct sanitary sewers in our pretenses Lorraine County General Sewer District 114 along Broadway Avenue, Taylor Street, Samhurst Township. Schedule a public hearing, notify residents of assessments.
Okay, now, first, is this a petition?
No, this is not a petition, Sue, Commissioner. This is, as a, as a brief refresher, we are under orders and findings from the EPA to correct an imminent health matter in this area. Now, I know we were told to immediately correct it, and we've been working on it for three years, so I guess that's about as immediate as these things get. But we don't have any, any choice on this sewer, petition or not. This sewer has to be done, or we're going to be in serious hot soup with the EPA. We are ready for it.
Have they found this as of yet, Jim?
Not as of yet, but because we're progressing, and actually, we're behind schedule on the orders and findings, but because we're progressing and we're working on it, that's what they want to see. They want to see forward momentum. They would like to see it a lot more rapidly, but as long as we're not moving backwards or sideways, I think that they'll be patient with us, but this sewer has to be done. Everybody can come in here and pound the table all they want, the sewer has to go in.
Now, last week when we scheduled hearings, we had to have specific dates, Teresa.
Right.
Put your magic hat on, and what dates can you suggest to us?
Well, we already have the ones we did last week on December 1st, so unless the Board wants to meet another day, like on December 5th, which would be a Monday, we can do that.
Do you have any other suggestions?
I mean, we can go the 8th, which is a board day. Can I come back to this for a second? The last time we scheduled those, and I, I should have spoke up there, an hour between those two meetings on those two sewers is not going to be enough time. It just isn't. I anticipate those meetings taking two to three hours apiece, and I don't think we should fool ourselves into thinking that an hour is going to be sufficient. And, and the problem is, when you get on that backed up, you're working on one, another group comes in to the meeting, and then they want to get involved with that meeting, and they don't even know it's not their meeting, and you end up with, with chaos.
Okay, so let's address this meeting, and then...
I was going to say, then they're better scheduled on a different date rather than a board day, then.
Have we sent the letters on those other meetings already?
We can amend that, can we, Jerry?
I think we should amend that.
Okay, well, let's, let's address this one now, since it's the one before us.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What other days do you have besides the 8th of December? Can we do it on the 15th? That's our last board meeting day, and still be in, in time? Are you shaking your head now?
No, you have to go within that week, December 5th week.
Why don't we do it on the Monday?
That's fine.
Do it on a separate day.
You got the 5th, the 6th, the 7th, the 8th.
I don't know what I'm doing on Monday, but...
No, we don't have to do it on Monday. How about Wednesday?
Well, I don't know what I'm doing. I don't remember. I didn't bring my calendar with me. I didn't know we were going to have a party.
What, what was the time for the other two on the 8th?
1:02.
1:02.
But I mean, we can back that up to a different date of that week. We have to go within that week for those two, and we have to go this week for, this one here, so...
Would you like to do the Tuesday?
We can do every other day, if you want to. Well, you can do them all on the same day. Space them out enough time to give us time to be able to, you know, break the meetings up, if you want to do them all on the same day and just have, you know, sewer Tuesday.
9:01 or something?
Yeah, I mean, you're going to be here anyway.
Well, we're going to break for an executive session.
Figure it out, then.
Could we check our calendars, and then when we come back to take any action, we could establish the dates, and any change we want to make, would that be okay?
That's fine.
The property owners will be notified of this meeting by letter, like certified mail?
Yes. Regular mail.
Regular mail.
Well, it's regular mail. The, the other thing I need to point out, if, and the reason I like to have them close at hand is, we have to bring a lot of other people in, so normally, you know, doing a full day with the consultants and the sanitary engineer and his people, normally we systematically work on these things. It makes it easier for everybody all along the way.
When they get that letter, will they have an estimate of what the assessments are going to be?
Yes.
Okay.
That's when you start getting the hate mail.
So we'll take action on that, item number 13, after the executive session.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Teresa.
Under the Board of Elections, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the alterations
Under the Board of Elections, instruct the clerk to advertise for bids for the alterations in election system and security of Lorraine County Board of Elections. Mandatory pre-bid meeting will be held at 2:00 PM November 16th at the Board of Elections, and bids will be open at 2:00 PM on November 23rd. Notice published in the Chronicle Telegraph on November 7th and 14th, and an estimated construction cost $90,000.
Commissioners, notice the word mandatory pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, who said? Oh, mandatory pre-bid meeting.
Okay, pre-bid.
What are we doing over there, though?
Well, this is something that we've been on again, off again, and I've had discussions with the board in the spring. There's certain structural changes that are needed to the building and the inside of the building to more completely comply with the new HAVA laws and the type of equipment they have. The board originally authorized us to work with the Board of Elections up to $90,000 with what we all discussed. When they brought the project back, it was $130,000, and I wrote some correspondence back and forth that I CC'd the board on that I wasn't going to present it to the board until they came within the $90,000 expectation the board had authorized me to work with them on. And so we had one of those, you know, Mexican standoffs going, and I simply wouldn't follow the information. They have since relented and revisited the issue and found a way to stay... Apparently, stay within the $90,000, and I am now forwarding for your consideration. I think it needs to be done. I don't think there's a lot of fluffery there. Some of the rooms are required. They have all kinds of new locking. You know, 16 people got to look at each other to lock the door and all kinds of other weird stuff that's going on with things. You know, we went from one end of the spectrum, you know, to the other end of the spectrum. So hopefully, we'll find some balance in the coming years, but I think it's necessary. I don't think there's a lot of frills here, and I would urge you to support doing that in the building.
Questions further? I'll some move.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, award bid to Jack Mattas Chevrolet Inc., all area in the amount of $281,577.78 to be paid from account, LCC Fund Equipment Lease for Lorraine County Children's Services to purchase six 2006 Chevy Impalas and 12 2006 Chevy Uplanders. Two bids were received on September 27th, and this bid was the best and most responsive. These vehicles are proposed to be delivered on Wednesday, December 21st, 2005, not '06.
2005, that's great.
I was getting ahead of myself.
No.[1346.25][1346.25](laughter) I'll some move.
I'll second.
I have a question. There were two bids. They said the second... Or the first bid that was not granted had three specifications that were met. Do we know what those three specifications are? Because the difference between the two bids is almost another car.
Ms. Newton?
Ms. Alexander, Children's Services.
Would you come to the microphone, please, Ms. Alexander?
Good morning.
Actually, there were... There ended up being four specifications that weren't met. There were no power mirrors, no extended heat and air, no child safety locks, and no split bench seat.
There was a difference in the quality of the product you had specified then.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's one correction. We're not purchasing them, we would be leasing them.
Seems like a lot of... A lot of money, I mean, almost another... Like I said, almost another car in the difference between the two bids. It's just my opinion. This doesn't come out of the general fund. This is out of their money, so...
No, the reason I didn't have a response for you, Commissioner, is because I'm not involved with this at all. I know that they've leased these cars. They found it more cost-effective. Children's Services used to own a fleet of cars, and they found it more cost-effective to go to leasing of cars a few years back.